Cleaned up. For many years I've complimented our youth in leaving the pumpkins all Septoberfest in the shape that they were the day that they were put down. And I have not heard anything differently this year. So, congratulations and thank you to all the citizens of Wabashaw. School board elections, Septoberfest, and that is it for my presentation now. Committee reports, John, you want to start?
Certainly. Port Authority met the 17th. We, normal business paid the bills, that kind of stuff. Under general business, we had a presentation from Brian Yenter with respect to a video or movie program that he would have liked, he'd like to promote into the community. He was actually for Port Authority involvement. And I think the Port Authority's general impression was is that that was more on the lines of a Chamber Commerce kind of venture rather than the Port Authority. I think the Port Authority focuses more on getting land ready to market and sell as well as assisting businesses with getting started in the community. The other thing we talked about were the two properties on Second Street. We're going to move forward with that and get some work done with SITA on that, I think. And that was it.
Questions for John? Jeff, anything?
Nope.
Brian, anything?
Not tonight.
Do you know anything?
No, sir.
Craig.
Planning and zoning met on the 10th of October and we're still working on the zones. We're done with Phase 1 of that, moving on to Phase 2. So, it's taking out a lot of language and putting it in the form of a table or chart that you can look at and pull all that. Otherwise, we had a lot of redundant language. So, it should shorten up the number of pages we use. We also had a number of comments come back from about the construction of the Gurken grain bin. So, we didn't include in that permit a restriction on construction. And so, they were constructing on a Sunday morning at 7:00. So, a local businessperson had to refund some people their money because they were disturbed. They were house guests, paid for the house that night and were disturbed that morning. So, there were some consequences and we just resolved to try and include construction times in residential areas in future permits. That's about it. But I did go to a meeting of the Main Street Committee. Could I brush you up on that?
Sure.
You may have all got a lengthy letter from Mary Flechek. So, I've been to a couple of meetings, the mayor, you've been to them. And so, the Main Street Committee is something, I guess it's a Minnesota-type of organization. Several cities have used it. It's an organization that helps you improve your Main Street, whether it's called Main Street or called whatever. And so, some of the towns around here are Owatonna and some other cities around here, Winona. And they've used it to, the Main Street people help you write grants to get more money to develop your Main Street and a lot of other things. So, Wabashaw's been a peripheral member for about $750 a year. And so, what that committee wants to do now is move up to a higher standard of membership where you actually can, at the lower level that we're at, you can't benefit, you can't get any of these people to help you write grants. If you want to move up to the next level, they'll help you write the grants, but then the dues go up to about $2,500 a year. And then, I guess, there's another fee too of 28, so it's 300. So, it's 28, 2900 a year. They're asking for, that committee is asking to be included in our next year's budgeting for 2018, up to 6,000 to cover additional expenses like trips to whatever. But I just want to bring that up, that it sounds like a really interesting organization. It sounds like we can get more for it than the money that we put in for it. And we could invite Mary Flechek to come talk about a little. She mainly wanted to get the council aware of this and that it could be a possible cost next year. But 2,800 or 2,850, I guess, is probably the minimum that they need.
I think that, I was planning to have that discussion when we have the budget discussion. I think that'd be a perfect fit for that and agree that Mary should probably plan to attend. I didn't get copied on that note, so if you want to.
Oh.
When we set the date here, I saw it, Brian had forwarded it to me.
Okay.
But when we set the date for the meeting, maybe if you just want to forward that to her and let her know the time.
Okay, cool.
Craig, just a minute of discussion on that. Would it be appropriate for Mary and the Main Street Committee to address the Port Authority first?
I don't know. I don't know where this falls.
Well, Emily did give a presentation with respect to Main Street a long time ago as they were just getting started with it. And it's an exciting program. I always was, I'm a little confused as to where it lies or who it partners with, you know, Chamber, Planning, Port Authority, Council. Where does it, where does it gel in? And who is it working with? And, you know, HBC, I don't know. So, maybe at the budget meeting would be a good time to really talk about that.
Flesh that out.
Yeah.
I think it's tied most closely to HBC.
I think so too, but, you know, kind of how I felt about it when we were giving the presentation, I thought it was a great idea. It's a good concept, been around a long time.
Yeah, and it's been successful in a number of places.
Winona, it's really done well. Steve?
The Utilities Commission met tonight and outside of just general day-to-day business, there was really nothing out of the ordinary.
So, everything's running well in Wabashaw?
Polls are flushing. That's good.
Yeah, that's big. I don't have anything on streets or parks and rec.
I can do that. Tony gave me some updates. With this time change, he was unable to get away.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Chad?
The Street Commission did not meet due to lack of a quorum this last meet, or today would have been the Park Board met. They're looking at the zoning and the possible uses for the land purchase. That was discussed, so they might be, I think they recommended a change in the zoning to the Planning and Zoning Board. The park plan, they're going to take a look at getting that updated. It's been a few years now since that's been looked at, so they're going to look at refreshing that. And that would just be a continuation and an update to the comp plan when that gets, when that gets done. So, that's the things on the Park Board's plate. And you did see the update from Tony. I know he sent it out to council on the Emerald Ash and the tree inventory and how we're going to approach that. The inventory got about three-quarters done. And just extrapolating those numbers like Tony did, we're going to focus on treating trees in parks, but in boulevards, we will look to remove trees. So, that's the approach right now. Still a lot to flesh out with that as we go. From my perspective, we've still had continued discussions, obviously, with the core plan. The mayor and I, I think is that when General Kaiser, we haven't had a meeting since then, but since Major General was here, we met with him on October 12th. Had a good meeting with him. I'm sure you saw some of it in the paper. Very straightforward gentleman, was challenging his staff to think differently and think about the 40-year plan, why it even needs to be a 40-year plan, that type of stuff. I also have had another set of meetings up in St. Paul in October, that was about October 25th. Brian and I had a meeting just today to continue to flesh out a plan that I think we're probably getting close to being able to more fully present that plan. That plan does involve a terminal up on the Carls, East and West Side, a terminal on the river, barge terminal, whatever you want to talk about it. The Port Authority submitted a grant to the Port Development Assistance Program. There is no commitment on that. It's simply the first steps to get ourselves in the door for a grant in that manner. So, I think we'll actually be hearing on that in a couple of weeks as it goes now. But we got a lot of background work to continue. The ambulance director search, we had a round of interviews and we're working through one of the specific candidates last night, so we'll see how that goes. Bonding, we did have a call with the governor's office on Halloween, October 31st. So, we had, Ralph Thompson was present at the governor's office as well as the lobbyists that they've contracted with. And then, I was on the phone. So, we had about a half-hour conversation with the governor's, one of the governor's right-hand man, or assistants to talk about the project that was submitted. So, and that was received fairly well, I thought. So, yeah, that's my update. Any questions?
What's the, what's the next step on the years?
Really? I think it's to get the Corps to pull the plan, to pull and put out the new one. I don't think, I think doing anything else until that would be premature at this point.
Okay, so no meeting set up right now?
No, nothing, nothing short of, I'm going to actually go up to St. Paul probably next week with, with the Corners to have a meeting with the Corps directly about some of the specifics that we've talked about, so.
I hear a lot of compliments from our citizens on the work that the city has done, especially the work that Chad has done. So, overall, I think the community is very happy with the effort that our city has put forward. So, Chad, thanks a million for what you've done on that so far. Consent agenda is the number eight, and I'll read that, to prove the October meeting minutes, a resolution assessment of unpaid utility charges, resolution decertifying Tiff District 4, resolution consent to transfer control for HBCI franchise, first reading of the amendments to the ATV and golf cart ordinances, and then to approve our warrants. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously. We do have a public hearing this evening, so I'll open the public hearing at...
Is it supposed to be at 5? It's at 5, so why don't we go to the 10-1 and 10-2, Mayor? And come back to the public hearing?
Okay, public hearings at 5:00?
Yeah.
Okay, I did not have that. Okay. General business, schedule a November budget shop?
We were thinking November 21st. It's a Tuesday, two Tuesdays from now at 5:00.
Here it says.
Oh, that's why we did it.
So, like, that's Port Authority, so we'll be done in a couple hours.
That's what we were thinking. If we did 5:00 to 7:00, we could roll right into Port Authority.
First for me.
What time?
The screen this way.
Any thoughts? Dean, can you do the library?
Do what?
Does the library work for you as a facility if we hold it there?
Yeah.
I thought it'd be good. If anyone hasn't been to the library lately, it's very nice, the way it turned out, and I thought it'd be good to hold the budget discussion there.
Five again.
5:00?
Clock on 21st.
Little bit more, Joe. That work for you, Brian?
I'll have to duck out, I'll work again early, but it's doable.
We can do 5:00.
If it works for everybody else.
I don't think it's going to be a two-hour discussion by any means. We could even push it back to 6:00 if that works for you.
It'd be better. But if it, if it works for everybody else at 5:00, I can make it work.
5:30 compromise? Not hearing anything else?
5:30, fine with me.
Do 5:30.
21st?
21st.
And you said at the library?
We'll do it at the library, yeah. That expansion is, for the most part, done and that I got my tour. I think it's really, really well done and be good to let everybody see it. And they got some good projection capability there too, so.
Fireplace looks real nice, too.
Well done.
And item number two, local road improvement application. Looks like Brian's coming up on that.
And we got the TV set up here as a projection tool to be able to see what he's going to be talking about here. This is something we can talk about, how we want to do this. It was a request from Craig to look at this. And I think it's a pretty snazzy little outfit here, so go ahead, Brian.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council members, in your packet was a description of this item. A couple of legislative sessions ago, the legislature set aside some funding in a bonding bill for what's called the local road improvement. It's intended to be grant funds that are available to counties, to cities over 5,000 as well as cities under 5,000 population. And those three categories are set up separately and you compete separately for this funding in those separate categories. When this last round went through, there was criteria that you had to meet related to regional significance. And I would say that the applications that they received from cities under 5,000 were relatively slim. But there were a few cities that received funding across the state, well, several cities across the state that received funding through this program for strictly local roads that wouldn't normally apply for funding or receive funding from the state for road improvements. So, last legislative session, the legislature reapplied into that program or allocated funding into that program again, and they opened up a application for the local road improvement program again. That application process is in swing right now. Applications are due in December. Talking with staff, we know that you are planning on doing some, some projects in 2019. There were a couple of projects that seemed to fit the criteria for the local road improvement program related to the regional significance criteria that they set in, in the appropriation for the, the program. We identified a couple of different streets that have been identified for improvements. One is kind of a, two different streets, Allegheny Avenue and 8th Street. The aerial photo is old here, but this is where the Dollar General recently went in. And so, if you're familiar with these streets, these are streets in need of improvement. And they would, didn't work. I'm on the map. New technology.
Because you got multiple screens set up, probably.
Don't, but...
Can you reconnect to it?
Let me try reconnecting.
It worked fine today.
Did, it worked perfectly.
Sure. Yeah, there it is. There it is.
Beautiful, that was the street that we're looking at.
Your mouse is on there now, so.
Let me try one more thing here. Apologize. Cast to desktop. Share my screen. Now you're seeing it. There we go.
Go.
All right. So, what I was trying to point out was that was Allegheny Avenue and 8th Street, the new Dollar General is located here. These streets are in need of improvement. These would meet the regional significance criteria based on the fact that you recently designated them as truck routes. So, there's some criteria in the program that would allow these streets to be eligible for, for the funding. The estimated cost of this particular project is right around $100,000. The other roadway that we identified is 12th Street, west of Broadway extending out to Highway 60. Again, if you've driven that road, it's in need of some rehabilitation. It meets the regional significance criteria from the standpoint that it connects a trunk highway on the west end to a county roadway over on the east end. So, this is a segment of that roadway that meets that criteria. The proposed work on both of these streets would be rehabilitation work, so basically mill and overlay work, similar to what you did in the 2016 project with some of your downtowns. The estimated cost of this particular roadway is $174,000. So, those are the two streets that we identified with staff as roadways in town that would meet the, the specific criteria that are allowable under the program. There's a resolution in your packet that's necessary to pass, to adopt, in order to submit with the application. You are allowed to apply for up to $750,000. These two projects total about $275,000. You are not an eligible recipient of the money without having a fiscal agent, so you're required to have a sponsor. That sponsor would be Wabashaw County. So, the next step here is to get a resolution from Wabashaw County to support you as your fiscal agent, and then we would submit the application to the state. I brought up this question about the previous allocation and a few cities being funded the last time around to highlight the fact this can be an extremely competitive program. We're aware of many, many different cities across the state there to compete for this program. So, I don't know what the chances are of getting the money, but the application is very simple, requires a couple resolutions, it's a two-page application, so the effort in putting together the application is low and it's worth submitting. So, we'll see what happens with the award, but these are the two projects we're requesting permission to apply for.
And this is, we've been having an ongoing discussion, Brian, myself and Tony, on a full list of streets that are going to be done in the 2019 project, and Brian's got that estimate. We'll probably touch on that, well, we will touch on that at the, at the budget session on the 21st. But those are all streets that are within the grading scale of it's time to do something or they will slip further down the line where they'll become a reconstruction versus trying to buy some time out of them. Now, going back to the original discussions, going back to the 14 project and the 16 project, yeah, some of these, and Craig brought this up for this application to us directly, and some of the utilities are old underneath these streets. However, we can prolong the life of the streets. We don't have the money for the reconstruct. We may get the street done and within a year be putting a hole in to fix a water main, but...
Yeah, I was, I was looking at our Boldman Mink maps here. So, it looks like there's only a sewer that goes across Allegheny over to Shield Super Value in the area where the alley would be, if there was an alley in there. And then, right between the lot lines. And then, so that's a possibility where we could disturb it, but maybe you want to roll a dice on that. But the other thing I was looking at was 12th Street has a water main of undetermined age. So, I'm wondering, and maybe Tony ran into us when he was doing the culvert down there, you know, what condition is that at? So, I'm just saying, well, we had a little problems last year with, on Second Street and a few other places where we had to go back and clean up some, we had to cut back open the street after we paved it for, I think it was sewer. So, that's, and you know, as, as a highway engineer, street engineer, that's one of the things that grates on your nerves is you just paved this thing and now you're tearing it up. So, you try and avoid that because once you put a patch in, it's still a patch. It's not as good as if you left it alone. So, that's what I'm wondering. Can we determine the age of that or is it worthwhile to try and look at that to see if we want to do anything with that before we pave over it? Or do we just pave over it and roll the dice again?
It's, it's difficult to assess water main because you can't, you can't assess the condition of it without digging it up, without spending a significant amount of money. There are some non-destructive testing techniques, but they're very expensive to do. And on a short segment of water main like this, it wouldn't be feasible. So, the way we typically track condition of water main is one, age, which we don't know here, and number two is, is the frequency of water main breaks. We do track that in the web GIS system and we don't have, staff doesn't have a history of breaks on this particular section. So, we use that information in conjunction with age where we know it to determine sort of a level of risk that we're looking at here. Obviously, the first break has to happen sometimes, so you never know. But if you don't have a history of breaks here, you've got some level of confidence. And Chad's right, we went through this, went through it even before I started with you on the 2014 project, and we certainly discussed it at length when you initiated the 2016 project that you were covering up utilities that were aged. The water main certainly was aged on that project that you, that we're going to talk about the assessments on here. The sewer had been lined, but Chad brings up the good point. We do have cost estimates on full reconstruct for all these streets too that we went over at council workshop. And to bite off the reconstruction and spend the money that you have available on reconstruction would get you maybe a couple of these streets. Meanwhile, the rest of those pavements would continue to deteriorate and probably move towards the reconstruction phase. So, there are some streets in town that we've been talking about budgeting down the road for reconstructs, and they're related to some of the, the more heavily used streets in town, a cooperative, potentially cooperative project with the county. So, that's where we're considering the future reconstruction, full reconstruction, utility efforts at. And with the rest of these streets doing similar to the 2014 and 2016 project, trying to keep the streets from moving into the reconstruction phase, getting another 10 to 15 years of life out of them until you can budget to do full reconstruct on some of these others. So, it hasn't, the decisions haven't been made in a vacuum. Council hasn't been privy to all the details, but we are considering those things when we're having these discussions.
One thing I didn't get out of the thing was, are we, are we just doing straight overlay? Are we, are you putting a new bit curve on, on part of 12th Street?
We, we've done really high-level planning estimates, so how we looked at these was similar type project to 2016. We've included the cost of bituminous curb in these, but we haven't gone out and done a detailed field assessment to determine exactly where we're putting curb and all those types of things. So, we have like, it's a little bit confused. We have a detailed, you know, list of quantities here.
Yeah, it looks like you had the plans all done.
It does, but this is a, a planning level spreadsheet where if you looked off to the side, we have a bunch of assumptions that we plug in and it kicks out quantities to give us a reasonable estimate. So, it looks like we have more detail in here than we really do, but these are planning level estimates simply for the purpose of budgeting and, you know, applying for the grant funds and things like that.
So, the assumption is that they'll get overlaid at the same width that they're at, they are now?
Yeah, we haven't plugged in any widening on 12th Street, actually on, sorry, on Allegheny and, and 8th because we know width is an issue there. We did plug in some cost for widening on those because it's a truck route. We know that semis are coming in out of the Dollar General. Actually, Dollar General did a little bit of widening themselves as a part of their parking lot expansion, so we're going to try to match that and take care of some widening on that. But no widening on 12th Street.
Those are the kind of details that'd be nice to, when you ask for money, is to throw in a little, little bit idea of what you're asking money for.
Yeah. The funny part about this program is there's no local, well, that's funny, it's good. There's no local match. They ask for very little detail in the, in the application. They're more focused on the kind of road and what the service of the road is, what the purpose of the road is in the application, and they cover basically all your costs. So, it's yet to be seen what they would fund if they do fund you, whether they fund your full amount or not. But it's one of the few programs I've seen where there's not a designated required local match and they don't separate out, you know, engineering and construction fees and things like that.
You can't throw in a water main, can you?
No, it's road improvements. We did ask that question, but yeah, no, it's focused on road improvements. So, storm sewer would likely be eligible because it's, could be considered a road cost if you could justify it, but not sewer.
Brian, is this funding source part of the Small City Assistance Plan?
No, it's completely separate.
Completely separate, okay.
So, that's an allocation you automatically don't have to apply for. This is competitive funding. That's a completely separate allocation in the bonding bill.
Okay, so council members, all we're doing now is approving the, the city to go ahead and make application. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passed unanimously.
Mayor, could I clarify, you're adopting the resolution that was included?
Pardon me?
Can I clarify that your, your, your action was adopting the resolution that was included in the back? Okay.
Yeah, good. Yep, just like it says on the third paragraph.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay? Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, let's return back. And we'll jump to 11.1, resolution accepting donations, and I'm going to read these tonight. I have a little bit of information that I want to share on this. But for the children's library expansion donations, the Friends of the Library, which had a basket sale, a dessert sale, and an author's luncheon that many of us attended, 2,700... dessert sale, and an author's luncheon that many of us attended, $2,778.41. Dee Murdis has a bridge party at the golf course fundraiser in this year, annually, and this year, that group is donating $425. The Apple Strudel fundraiser, and I know Linda McNellan was, or McMillan, it was, um, very involved in that. Jody Jensen's, a young man who had a birthday, collected $300, and marched it right up to the library. I've seen that young man in the library from time to time, and, uh, he obviously has a passion for, for the library. And Mr. Dean Moyer, this is, uh, um, fourth or fifth, or maybe even more times in a row that I've seen you, uh, make a donation, so, all donations added up to, I wrote it down here, uh, about 5,000 bucks. Not quite. Motion to approve, or to accept?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Back to the public hearing. We'll open it at 5:04, and we start with a, um, comment from staff.
This is the conclusion of the 2016, uh, street and utility improvement project that we did, um, we've rolled all the costs together. We have sent notice to all of the affected, uh, or assessed people, uh, with the note of this, uh, hearing and the time. So, today, I'm hearing at five o'clock, and I don't see many people here. I think Ruby's actually, uh, either here as a reporter or as an assessee, um, but, Brian, if you would wanna, I mean, if we don't, uh, maybe peel through this a little bit, uh...
I was just gonna ask if you'd like me to go through the presentation, um, or not, I can?
We have actually already received checks, uh, based on the numbers that he gave at the last meeting, people thought they were due already, so they've been starting to send stuff, but, I mean, this is the official, final, uh, assessment piece, um, of this process, so, I'll leave it up to...
I don't need a presentation.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I will then ask, anyone in the audience that would like to address the council members, uh, speaking either for or against the, uh, adaptation of the assessment rule. Going once, going twice, going three times, um, I'm going to close the, uh, public hearing at 5:05. Council members, what's on your mind?
We went over this...
Pardon me?
I said we went over it pretty well, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I, I have one, I'd like to bring up one kinda general, if you can afford to make that assessment payment, or what are the options? Let's go that route. What are the options for making that, uh, those, uh, assessment payments? And are there any exemptions?
I got a, I got a slide on that.
Okay. Here you go. Assessment terms, if you choose to have it paid over a period, is 10 years with 3.75% interest.
Yep.
And then, uh, the other option is to certify it to the 2018 taxes, so you pay it in full.
Yep, if you, if it goes on your, if you don't choose to prepay it, it will go on your taxes, 2018 taxes, 10 years, 3.75% interest, it'll be amortized over that period. You can choose to prepay, you can't partially prepay, you have to fully prepay. If you, uh, if you make full payment within 30 days of the assessment adoption, which would be, if you adopt it tonight, it would be a December 7th, there would be no interest. If you, uh, pay in the remainder of that month, there'd be interest accrued through the end of next year, actually.
There a deferment option for seniors?
Next page.
There you go.
So, deferrals, uh, if you, uh, the property must be homestead property, so commercial property, you know, wouldn't apply, has to be homestead, 65 years old, or retired by permanent or told to, member in a National Guard or reserves on active duty, you must be the owner of the property, and it must be your principal residence, and the average annual payment for your assessment must exceed 1% of your adjusted gross income, and then you would, uh, qualify for the deferment, and then you would make application to the city clerk, uh, if you meet those criteria, it would be deferred.
All right, so service members have to be on active duty. All right. Thank you.
Can you, uh, after this, this thing starts up, can you pay it off early?
Um...
And then don't pay the interest on whatever's left?
I think you pay interest to the end of that year.
To the end of the year?
Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
Interest to the end of that year, and, uh, that's your prepayment penalty, so if you pay it in December, it's virtually nothing.
Yeah, it's basically this, hurts to this, uh, this area here, anytime during...
You can pay it at any time during that 10 years.
Yep.
Yeah.
Save yourself the interest, yes.
Okay. That was the question.
Yep.
All right, so I will ask for a motion approving the resolution adopting the 2016 street assessment.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Woodley, seconded by Mr. Jeff. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That passed unanimously.
It's a good project to have behind us. Thank you, Brian, for everything.
Yeah, thank you, Brian, another one, well done. What bridge is that?
Golden Gate, is it?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
So, what about number 12?
Information financials, uh...
Emailed to the council? So, are we talking about the, uh, the revenue and whatever statements?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so my only comment on that was, uh, on the expenditures, there wasn't a sum, sum total on the bottom of the columns, and I asked Patty if she could put that in, and she said she's working on it.
Okay.
All right.
Did you wanna meet Craig, you had talked last time, and I haven't heard from you?
No, I haven't, uh, I haven't had a chance to look at him, but, uh...
Okay. Whenever you wanna meet, we go through them at least monthly, so...
Oh, okay.
I'm ready...
All right.
For any discussion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll...
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
But, uh, what are your thoughts? We need something like this, do we?
It came in kinda handy, right at the end there.
That's what I've heard from Tony and others, he thought...
It'd be nice if you could mount one, like, in a corner up here, so they could see.
We thought about two of them.
Yep, I, why not?
This whole unit to do this, now, this is my TV, and I would sell it at a discounted price, cause we don't need it anymore, when we moved, I bought it two months before we moved, and now...
You got a bigger one?
We could. Um, that thing was right on top of us, anyway, um, this whole unit with this Google Chrome thing is like 630 bucks, that would include the cost of the TV, a 60-inch TV. A, a new 60, yes. We could do the whole thing for...
Including the mounts?
I think we had a, they, the price was, let me get it right here. The wall mounts are $56, a 60-inch TV, a new one is 698, I would probably do 500 or 550 on mine, so that'd be less, and then, uh, Chromecast is $35.
City can get donations, you know? I can get the Chromecast for free.
Well, we've got it already, I bought it.
Oh, you need two of them?
Nope, we'd wire the TVs together. We'll look forward to seeing it in December's meeting.
On my way.
I mean, do, do we approve, like, to-do media anyway, like, a while ago? Just to look at it and bring it back.
Oh.
But, this is actually under the limit that we need council approval on anything, so it's less than $2,000, you can do this whole thing, yeah, and people can hear this, except we're gonna be back in business, so turn it off quick.
We maybe didn't use it so much tonight, but, uh, there could be a lot of...
Well, there's times...
There could be a lot of...
Planning commission and other...